Happy New Year, and we're gonna call our meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Pledge of Allegiance. So again, Happy New Year, the beginning of a new decade. Our first item is approval of minutes. We have, is there a motion to approve the December 16, 2019 joint work session with this school committee?
Seven seconds.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. And is there a motion to approve the December 16, 2019 regular meeting minutes?
Seven seconds.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Next, we have our consent agenda. Is there any item that someone would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Uh, yes, um, number two.
Any other removals? Alright, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda of mine, except for item number two?
Seven seconds.
All in favor? Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. Right, item number two. A motion to approve, ratify, and confirm a Class F1 alcoholic beverage license for the Contemporary Theater for a fundraising event to be held on December 19, 2019, at the Tower, subject to state and local regulations.
Seven.
Is there a second? Discussion.
I only, the only reason I removed it was just to double check on the date, to see if there was a typo, just to see if you wanted to correct it for the record, or if that was a retroactive license.
It's an approved, ratify, and confirm.
It was retroactive, they filed too late to make the last meeting, December 16.
Okay, okay, um, yeah, that's it.
Alright, so that's an approved, ratify, and confirm for an event on the 19th of December. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item 10 is a motion to approve the purchase of one Lucas III chest compression system for the fire department from Stryker Medical, formerly Physio Control Incorporated, in the amount of $12,549.55, including a trade-in of two manual Stryker cots.
Seven.
Second.
Discussion, any comments or questions from the council? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item 11 is a motion to approve the purchase of three portable radios and accessories for the fire department from Motorola Solutions Incorporated pursuant to the State of Rhode Island Master Price Agreement in the total amount of $14,981.64.
Seven.
Second.
Alright, discussion. This comes out of the capital budget, seeing no comments or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item 12 is a motion to approve the email filtering service replacement project with Zones LLC in the amount of $22,502.45.
Seven.
Any discussion? This increases our security at the IT level. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item 13 is a motion to approve the request from Road Races and Events Incorporated to conduct the annual Ocean State Rhode Island Half Marathon and 5K Road Race to be held on Sunday, October 25, 2020, from 7:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., subject to state and local regulations.
Seven.
Alright, any discussion on this, questions? Steve, could you come forward? Most of our road races, most of our road races, we, people come forward and they're for kind of a nonprofit or for a cause, but this is, this is for, this is a for-profit, is that correct?
It's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Alright, any, any comments or questions?
Yeah, Steve, so this one's for profit, do they give anything back to the town at all? On any donations, any, anything that is going on in the town as well?
Well, it's not included in the paperwork, not to my understanding, but Karen, she is here tonight, we'd like to have her speak on her behalf, but it's not included in the paperwork.
So for any of the detail officers, do they pay for the detail officers?
Yes. And they do pay for the resources at the beach also.
This is the annual, has this been, how many times before has this been?
Yes.
Once or twice?
Uh, I believe this is the fourth time.
If Karen would like to come up and answer Rick's question, that'd be helpful.
Hi, I'm Karen Zions, I'm the owner of Road Races and Events Incorporated. So this is the fifth year of the race, and we do this in the off-season to minimize the impact to the residents, as well as to bring revenue to the merchants at a slower time of year. And one of our goals with this race, any race that we produce, is to encourage our runners to explore the area. They come, our runners come from all over. So we ask them to explore the area, the community, not just the course, and that's why we choose our races very carefully. Because this race is a marathon, and not just a 5K or a 10K, but, excuse me, the runners don't just come for the race, they come for the weekend. So they fill up hotels, restaurants, buy breakfast, and they bring some money into the community. Over the past five years, we've donated about $30,000 to local groups in town. Some of them are Narragansett High School Girls Soccer Team, Narragansett High School Girls Lacrosse Team, the Bonn Shores Community Camp, and the South High School Lacrosse Country Team. So we do give money back to the community, we are a for-profit company, as are many other companies in the state that run races in Narragansett. We also donate our leftover food to the Johnny Cake Center, the local church kitchens, and the homeless shelters. Any shirts that are left over, we also donate to nonprofits. While we're not a nonprofit company, we are a certified V Corporation, which means that we meet the highest standards of their social and environmental performance, public transparency, and legal accountability to balance profit and purpose. So basically, we're people that use our business for a forceful group. Our company is woman-owned and operated by myself, excuse me, and my business partner.
Have you identified a charity that you're thinking about giving back to this year for this race?
Uh, well, we, what we usually do is we use multiple groups, so we usually have a dozen groups, so those are in the process now of securing groups for our entire season. And we have had interest from all of these groups that I mentioned locally to participate again and again.
So about how many people, how many runners do you have, or people that anticipate?
Last year, we had close to seven, 50 or 70, I believe, I don't have those figures in front of me, I'm sorry.
And how much does it cost to get into this?
It varies, a half marathon can be $50, and a marathon can be $85. It just depends on the time of year that they sign up.
Don't worry, Rick, I think they'll get you in there for nothing. Get you down there.
Yeah, I wish I could, Rick.
In addition to using police and fire, and we also use the fire department too, and pay for details with them as well. Any questions?
Thank you.
Any comments from the council? Any comments from the public?
We put a moratorium up a couple of years ago about any additional, right? So this is one that's been capped under, correct, Steve? There's a moratorium about any additional road races, so this is all the existing road races?
Uh, that's correct, between May 1st and September 30th.
Yes.
Kathryn Celebrator, 48-year-old, is calling. I've had some correspondents with Mrs. Zions, and I'm really not clear about exactly how much is given to each of these charities each year. The other side of it is this, that the agreement, or, and I know it wasn't a formal agreement, was that if we allowed a road race, a for-profit road race in town, the money would go to the Narragansett charity. I don't have the correspondents with me right now, but there were a whole bunch of names mentioned, and, you know, and it's always the same spiel, we're gonna have police and fire details, they're gonna stay at hotels, it's all so vague, though. I mean, I want some specifics, how many races are gonna stay at what hotels? How much money are they spending? I mean, this is, this is, these people, they come into town and they have the races in Narragansett, because we're a draw, that's the bottom line. And again, this is a for-profit company. As far as if it's for multiple sclerosis, cancer, whatever, it's fine. Or if it's for a race that is actually going to give money to a particular charity, and I'm gonna tell you, I would probably grant matters too, because they break in about 200 grand a year, they give 10 grand to the Historical Society, and then they write the Narragansett Historical Society Road Race. These races are an incredible disruption to the town, people complain about them all the time. But again, if there was some specific amount that was going to be given to a particular charity in town, since this race is already run a few times, then okay, but it has to be more specific than what you said.
Thank you, it is a relatively new race, I know that Steve moved here a few years ago. And it's a lot, and there's, you know, there's a lot of conflicts with traffic and things like that, and it is a for-profit situation. Is there anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to say so, it's October 25th. You got a pretty good shot at getting some rain. I don't know, bringing people in town, helping local business, I don't see what the problem is here, what is, you know? Am I missing something?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that.
This has been a bunch of newness this autumn, making a race, really.
Well, we're for that, right?
Yes, yes, don't tell my wife.
Like we were saying, this is an established race. Says here, this would be the sixth year, so it's happened for five years, this would be the sixth. I understand the moratorium, but again, this is one that's already been happening. Late October is really a perfect time to bring people in from out of town, that's when the restaurants and the hotels and the B&amp;Bs need people in town, so definitely for this. Again, we've been doing this, it's not like this is some new idea with this race, so I'm fine with it.
Anyone else?
I just want to ask, can we, Karen, can you, can you let us know tonight that it would go to a Narragansett organization? Would that be possible, did you make that commitment?
As in a non-profit?
If you, yeah, if you could come on up, it's just, whoever you select, because I agree with Patrick, and him with Jesse, it's a perfect time of year to bring people into town, and they are here for the weekend, they'll spend some money, our restaurants need it, our hotel needs it. But can you make the commitment to us, I know you're not ready to commit exactly who, but would you say that you will commit to having a Narragansett-based recipient?
As in, as in a 503, 5013 nonprofit?
Uh, well, it doesn't matter, as long as you mention the Narragansett High School.
Exactly, yes, because they're definitely committed to, they have asked us to do this race again this year, so those, the Narragansett High School, is this a mistake to you, I can definitely guarantee that.
As long as it's a Narr, for me particularly, as long as it's a Narragansett-based group, we've got some pretty good residents, that would be, that would be helpful, thank you.
And again, nobody doesn't want to have the races. It's a matter of, there are some organizations in this town that put on races, and they give a substantial amount of money back to the town, a substantial amount, if not all. So if you're doing 40 to $100,000 on a road race, I would think that you would be able to give 10, 12, maybe 15% of that money, maybe back to the town where it would be needed, whether it's the sports program or whatever we have going on, and maybe something that, again, Steve may know of something else that we're doing in the town that could use the money, but everybody else does it, it's just that we want the road races to come in, we want more people in the town, we want us to support the businesses. I don't know anybody in this town that doesn't want to support our local businesses. And if you don't want to support the local businesses, then shame on you. I support the local businesses, thank you.
Yes.
Harley Town Woodhill Road, if we're suggesting nonprofits, I'd like to suggest that maybe you donate some of the money to the friends of the Narragansett lot area, they certainly could use it, thank you.
We're following some people.
You might, might, may want to hold off on that commitment until after the vote. Uh, so what are we saying, we're saying that if you're a for-profit entity that wants to hold a race, we're gonna provide extortion? Is that what we're saying, I don't know.
When was that, when was that said, Patrick? Because we look for donations?
No, if you're saying if you're a for-profit entity looking to have a road race, you have to donate to a Narragansett charity.
We're asking them, as a suggestion.
Okay.
As a suggestion.
Well, actually, I wasn't asking, she said that in the past they had done that, so I was really saying, please make it a Narragansett, so not extortion, Patrick.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion approved four to one. Item number 14 is a motion to approve the request from the National MS Society for their annual ride, the road charity bike ride to be held on Sunday, June 14, 2020, subject to state and local regulations.
Seven.
Second.
Discussion, any questions for Steve? Alright, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item 15 is a motion to authorize the funding of $7,712 for a Rhode Island DEM Recreation Development Grant for the renovation of the Nishu Plutag Narragansett Native American Sculpture and authorize the town manager to sign the agreement subject to review and approval of the town solicitor if awarded.
Seven.
Second.
Discussion, so this is, actually, I'm gonna turn it over to either Steve or Jim, but this is, we're gonna be covering a quarter of the cost that looks like associated with the renovation. If there's something you either, what do you want to summarize regarding the Indian? I think it would be great, because this is great, that we got this.
So, just to back up a little bit, we have not received this grant award yet, this is just a condition upon the receiving of the grant, that we, this is slated for the December 2nd town council meeting that was canceled, so the deadline was right after that. So DEM has allowed us to put this before you, for this meeting, as a prerequisite to be able to apply for this grant. So we needed town council approval to be able to match this $7,712 to apply for the grant. This is part of our CIP, we do have this money in the CIP for parks improvement, and as you all know, we've been working with the Recognizing Board for several months, actually for well over a year. The American Native Indian Statue, which is in the park, is, we expect it every single year, we're maintaining it every year, but it's got to a point where it is in the condition where it needs to be removed from its base and completely renovated because of the weather elements and where it's supported to its base. So we're either gonna do a fundraising, we're trying to do fundraising and at the same time apply for this DEM grant. So hopefully, we'll be able to get this grant, which we can then use this matching fund to pay for the renovation to AppCor, AppCor gave us a price to renovate this. So it has to be removed from the base.
So this is prerequisite, we have, if this approval tonight, it would be a quarter of the money coming from your CIP, and then when would we expect generally a response regarding the total grant?
Hopefully sometime in 2020, sometime this spring.
Okay, great, any questions or comments?
One comment, I've actually seen the town manager, Jim Tierney, pulled over to the side of the road, just admiring the statue multiple times, that's a, that's a true story. So I know that, that, I know it means a lot to him and a lot of others in this town. I will say that I believe that we should be doing more than just renovating this sculpture in this town. We should really be honoring and celebrating Native Americans more often in Narragansett. So if, does anyone pay attention tonight, and that's something that you're interested in doing, I'd love to hear from you, whether it's email or a call. But I do think we should be doing a lot more for the Native Americans and the history of them in this area, so.
Yeah, I agree, I did see the town manager's likeness in that statue, you see? Yeah, Chief Canacho down here needs a once-over tour.
That's what we're talking about.
I don't know if you were able to, if you saw the agenda.
Is that the one, is it the wooden one or the?
The wooden one, it's the wooden.
This is the one that's great, yeah.
There were 74 of these, what they call whispering giants throughout the country, and we're honored to have one of these, and as you mentioned, councilman, they are, they are a, it's something that, it's, it's, heritage, our culture, and it's something that we should respect. And I think, to all due respect to the maintenance of it, it's something we've been doing, it predates me, we've been maintaining and trying to maintain it every single year by inspection and staining it, but the elements have gotten to it, so it's penetrated, penetrated the wood, where it needs to come down and be thoroughly pre-coated, and the headdresses need redressed, and the stainless steel bolts that bolted to the base have to be replaced, because the next major stall we have, we could lose that. So it's, we're really in a place where we have to do something very quickly. So we've been struggling with what to do with this, because it's a pretty expensive task to take place, and it's something that we don't have entirely in our budget, but enough to be able to at least match this, hopefully this grant.
Steve, what's his dad's name? Excuse me? Chief Canacho up here, what's his dad's?
That's a good shape.
So you mentioned it, yesterday I happened to be getting a coffee, and there was a gentleman that I did go to school with, and he is part of the Narragansett Indian Tribe. And I did give him my contact information to email me his, so I could forward it to the town manager, because they would, they would like to do something in Narragansett, whether it's in that area or another area of town, to recognize the Narragansett Indians. But I felt that we should direct it to the town manager, let Jim be the nucleus of the information, and then he can direct it to where it has to go. So hopefully, tomorrow or this week, that gentleman will get back to me, and then Jim can sit with them, and hopefully, we can move forward with, you know, recognizing the Narragansett Indians, taking care of this Indian, and moving forward with something of that nature. Thank you.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item 16 is a motion to approve the donation of land at Assessor's Platte Y-3, lots 176 and 177, and the town council waives all taxes accrued on said loss.
Seven.
Second.
Discussion, this item comes from a recommendation from the land trust, so I know that two of the land trust members have seen the back, so if they want to speak to this.
My name is Tom Rogers, I'm the chairman of the land trust. We received a letter from Ms. Dwyer and Ms. Morrow, the two owners, in October. We looked at it as a land trust, we had the people in the community development, did a quick review to see about the buildability, the ability to develop, and also any possible presence of hazardous materials in the past. We determined that it's clean, they have been, they received a notice that the building lots are unbuildable, and they donated to the land trust because they can't build on it. Has a tax assessment balance of $226.28 as of December 31, for this lot. And in our November meeting, we took a look at it, and it passes about six or seven of our criteria that we established back in April of 2017, as in it's a green belt, contiguous of the belt, there's no hazard material, and it's in a accessible to other public concern properties. So we voted seven to zero to acquire it, and we'll be due to, thank you, any questions?
Any questions? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. A motion to read, pass, and adopt is a second reading in ordinance and amendment of Chapter 731 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Narragansett, Rhode Island, entitled zoning, specifically text revisions in section 2.2, definitions 4.7, special flood hazard overlay district, and 6.4 dimensional regulations.
Seven.
Second.
This is a second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. So at eight o'clock, we have a public hearing, a decision, so it's gonna be a motion to open a public hearing to amend Chapter 731 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Narragansett, Rhode Island, entitled zoning, specifically text revisions in section 4.7, special flood hazard overlay district to address changes made by FEMA to the flood insurance rate map panels due to an update of the flood insurance study for Washington County, Rhode Island.
I'm making a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. So I'm gonna ask our planning department, Jill Sabo, to come forward for any questions for a brief summary, and to take any questions from the council.
Good evening, Mr. President.
Welcome, thank you.
Jill Sabo, I'm Ed McMahon. So I put some information up on the dais for you today to go over, to sort of explain this to you. On October 3rd, 2019, actually, let me back up, in 2017, FEMA was looking at doing an updated flood information study of Washington County, of the water systems in Washington County. So we knew that there were preliminary maps coming about 2017. October 3rd, 2019, they sent a letter indicating that that flood insurance study was completed for Washington County, and new flood insurance rate maps would be coming for an adoption data no later than April 3rd, 2020. Just the short, cut to the chase here, Narragansett is not affected by these changes, they were for riverine only. Narragansett has only coastal or tidal flooding, so there is no riverine flooding. We are updating our panels, because we actually share those panels with our neighbors, North and South Kingstown. So if you take a look at the, look at the visual I gave you, so you can see the western half of Washington County, all of the panel sizes, and then I blew up just the four panels that were changing. And then if you go to pages two, you can see Narragansett is highlighted in yellow, and then I went ahead and tried to circle the approximate area where the changes are. So in all four of those instances, there are no changes in Narragansett. For reference, the new panel, 0114, is in North Kingstown. New panel, 0202, is in South Kingstown, as well as 0203, 0204. The letter also describes letters of map change. So if you did receive the letter in October, you probably saw that it was multiple pages. Letters of map change are when an individual petitions FEMA to have their flood zone changed, a map amendment or a map change. And the letter referred to LOMCs or LOMCs that were included or not included in the panel changes. So did they make the change when they made the revised map? FEMA did not incorporate any LOMC changes for Narragansett. There are no existing letters of map amendment that have been superseded by these changes, and there are no LOMCs in Narragansett that need to be redetermined. So it's pretty straightforward for Narragansett. The panel changes are required from the FEMA. In order for the town to have the most updated panel information and ordinance, should we not comply with this, we will be suspended from the National Flood Insurance Program, which would jeopardize our flood insurance policies in town, and it would also jeopardize our CRS rating, our community rating system, rating of seven, which allows everyone in the special flood hazard area right now, as you know, for a 15% discount on their flood insurance. If there are any questions, I'm available.
Any questions from the council? Alright, is there any, any from, anyone from the public wishing to testify? Yes.
Hi, Susan Amoruso, West Bay Drive. It's not so much, oh, I'm gonna say, oh yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do, and it's not really a testifying, it's just, it would be helpful, if there was some kind of a presentation on the screen, so that the rest of the people in the audience would have an idea. so that the rest of the people in the audience would have an idea about what these panels are. Because we're in the dark, you all have your visuals, we do not. So we hear, but it's hard to grasp it without that. So that's just a comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? All right, so is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Seven.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved five to zero. And then we have this as actually our next agenda item, ordinance wise. So before that, you just need a motion to receive and place on file the recommendation of the planning board.
Seven.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item number eighteen is a motion to introduce, read, pass, and accept as a first reading and ordinance an amendment of chapter 731 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Narragansett, Rhode Island, entitled zoning, specifically text revisions in section 4.7, special flood hazard overlay district.
Seven.
Should I go?
Discussion, so procedurally, just a question, really for Terry. We don't need to do anything between the closing, the hearing, and the vote on the ordinance, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, it's the natural flow, okay. All right, so on that ordinance, the language of the ordinance itself, all in, before I call the vote on that, any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Thank you. All right, item number nineteen is a motion to approve, ratify, and confirm the mold remediation services performed at the Kenny Avenue Water Storage Tank Water Division office, completed by single source in the amount of $12,713.89.
Seven.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number nineteen.
Yeah, it's just the office that was, had mold?
Do you want to have?
What storage tank, what a division office? Does that mean it was just the office only that had the mold, or is it the tank had the mold?
Jim, or ten, no way.
Council members?
Welcome, everybody.
It's, was primarily the office space below the tank and in the storage space, but it's the handle space below the tank, it's not the tank itself.
Oh, okay. So this is like a foundation used there?
Well, there's, if you're familiar with that, obviously, the Kenny tank, it's a fluted column, so that steel superstructure on the outside there, there's office space under there.
Oh.
There's space for storage as well.
Oh, okay.
So it's a big area. All right?
Yep.
Any questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item twenty is a motion to authorize the creation of an additional truck driver position in the Department of Public Works and allow human resources to advertise for said position to be filled as soon as possible.
Seven.
Second.
Discussion.
This was the position that we had approved in budget last year, so it's not another truck driver. Just to clarify that.
Right, so we've budgeted for this, and the plan was that halfway through the fiscal year that the person would come on because the expectation was that in the wintertime that the workload would probably, is when there would be a spike in the increase. And this has been, in terms of increasing the positions, this has been a request that has been at the top of the list for several years, DPW being understaffed. Yes, Richard?
I noticed the word additional, and I'll make the same comment I did when we looked at the library situation. This is an additional front, I guarantee you it is needed, but it's time that we end the unreasonable goodies that we give to our employees. I'm especially referring to the COLA upper pensions. I made the comment about the library person, not because it was a library person, but because we cannot afford to continue on with this massive giveaway to our employees. We must end COLAs as we know it now, a 3% compounded thing is so far out of the market. It's beyond belief. So I will oppose this as I opposed the other situation because we have promised too much to too many for too long a time, and we continue to be way above market price when we hire our employees.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, Catherine.
Catherine Silver, 048 Rose Court. I don't have any problem with adding an additional employee. Stanley doesn't want a new person, they have a new silver row though. I can't afford another silver row, or you bought a lot of them. The other thing is this, I'd like to see a woman or minority get the position, and it's not enough to advertise a job, saying we're an equal opportunity employer. Employee really have to recruit if you want some diversity. And frankly, I go into the town hall, I don't see much diversity. And I see a lot of women in traditionally, you know, women-oriented jobs. And I think we need to start changing that. A good place to start is the DPW, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, anyone else standing?
Now that she mentioned it, I couldn't help but stand up and say, if we're not to buy a truck, I hope we buy last year's model, like a 2019 new truck, not a brand spanking on it, get a break, get a little of those little cost savings.
Thank you. Thank you, we're going to be heading into negotiations with the union, of which the new truck driver will be a member of. So we hear what Richard said on that front, and those are going to be starting relatively soon with that union. So any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question for Steve.
Good evening.
How you doing? Happy New Year. It was mentioned, I didn't see it here in the summary, but it was mentioned by council president that you're hiring another truck driver for the winter, I mean, because of the, you know, doing the plowing and...
Yeah, all of our tasks were shown here, everything that we do.
All year round.
It's for year round.
Yeah, but if you remember, we put it in, we could have started it at July 1. We chose to, to, that it would save, right, so save, right, save a little bit of money in the fiscal year because then we pay half the salary and benefits for that.
Correct, right. But, correct me if I'm wrong, we introduced a bribe system. That was supposed to, you know, lower labor costs.
That speeds up efficiency, and it's actually paid for itself.
Right.
It reduced our salt purchase, so our salt budget is actually lowered now. And when we do that, it's on a straight tire, right, over time, so we save a lot.
So it did save labor costs.
So we are saving.
Okay.
As much as we can, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item twenty-one is a motion to award the bid for street sweeping disposal and miscellaneous trucking services to the lowest bidder, Rambo and Disposal Services, at their bid prices for a one-year period.
Seven.
Second.
Discussion.
You might as well come up against you. So can you just give a little history? I mean, I was going over the, just so happened this weekend, I was going over all the trucks in DPW, and I noticed the years and how you guys are structuring the purchases, which is great because now we're purchasing vehicles when we need the vehicles.
Correct.
Because most of the vehicles we have that you're replacing are on the last leg. Correct. Dump a ton of money into them. So the vehicle that we have now is a 2000 and...
It's a 2000, we have a 2002 right now, we have a 2000.
So they're old, I mean, they've done their job, they're old, we don't want to put a ton of money in here. Whether we'll get something for them, we're using as parts, I don't know if we'll be able to do that. But again, I just wanted to make a point that, again, we're replacing vehicles that need to be replaced.
Correct.
And this comes out of their budget. It's not that we're adding anything additional to the budget that we approved.
So we just wanted to set that up. Right, we do this bid every year for additional trucking services that we can't handle. Or it's so rare that we would need it, this bid is in place, but if there's an emergency, we can just call them up.
Right.
If the creator breaks down all the way back from Jerusalem, I could call this company, and they'll go in, and they can come tell it back, for stuff like that. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. A motion to approve the proposal from Resella Valges and Associates to provide professional survey services required for completion of phase three of the road improvement project in the amount of $70,313.75.
Seven.
Second.
Discussion. So this is work to put together for phase three, so I think it's important for us to, as phase two of this winds down, we'll see a little less work being done on roads related to the road bond project because the permitting and design that's done in between phases, this is what this money is for. So this similarly happened between phases one and two. So many of you people in town will call or have a question about, well, why doesn't it look like there's a lot going on? And that's because you're in this permitting and preparation phase. And are there any questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. And motion twenty-three is a motion to appoint or reappoint tree wardens for the Town of Narragansett pursuant to Rhode Island general laws 2-14-2. So I'll be looking for a motion to reappoint Stephen Deano Jr.
Seven.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. And then is there a motion to appoint Joseph Harvey to the tree board?
Seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item twenty-four is a motion to direct a town clerk to advertise the town council's consideration of any potential increase in the ever-authorized liquor licenses in 2020.
Seven.
Second.
Discussion. So Terry, this is just advertising for potential increase. So if someone comes forward, then you'll bring that to us.
That is correct.
All right, any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item twenty-five is a motion to appoint or reappoint individuals to the planning board for a five-year term to expire on 11/1/2024.
So again, we have Vincent Indeglia is...
Is the incumbent, so is there a motion to reappoint Vincent Indeglia?
I'll move that motion, I'll second it.
There is a second, all right, discussion.
I think Jesse is going to say the same thing, you know, we, I would like the opportunity to interview everybody. I mean, planning board, and then, nothing against you, you do a great job, but it's, planning and zoning are two most important places in town. And I just think that we really need to rotate people through and interview them, so I think we need to interview.
Yeah, so I'll second that, that idea. During the election, four out of five of us promised publicly to hold public interviews for zoning and planning board appointments and reappointments. So in light of that, I would be behind scheduling a public interview for this, for this position before we do any voting.
Once again, we did say that we would interview. For me, it was interview if the position was not being requested for reappointment. This gentleman has served to just do interviews on people and then reappoint this gentleman to me. I don't know, I think that I feel like I'm insulting those I've interviewed, knowing that I'm not even going to do anything with them. So for me, if it's a reappointment, you've had plenty of time to chat with the person. They've been sitting there, they know the position. I believe this is Vince's last term, I think after this, that's it for him. So if the council's on board, we can move Vince forward, we don't have to do the interviews. But when Vince's position comes up again, it will be an interview process because it will be a vacant spot. So that's how I look at it.
Thank you. I know some of the council members go to the planning and zoning meetings as well, so you can see the individuals actually doing the job, right? These interviews are designed for new people to kind of see what their philosophy and everything is, but we kind of know, we know what it is on the existing, we know what the philosophy and approaches of our existing members. So, anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No, abstain.
Motion approved three to one to one for the appointment of Vince Indeglia. Item number twenty-six is a motion to approve a one-year contract extension for clothing cleaning services for the police and fire departments with East Winds Dry Cleaner at their quoted prices for a one-year period under the same terms and conditions as the original bid.
Seven.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item twenty-seven is a motion to award the bid for unleaded gasoline eight cent increment over oil price daily and diesel fuel seven cents over oil price daily to Patterson Oil Services through June 30, 2020.
Seven.
Second.
Discussion.
Jim, could you explain to the town really what this, what this means?
We have to set, we have to lock in, we try to lock in, I'm sorry. We try to lock in. We try to lock in the best prices going forward annually. They're monitored closely before we, before we lock them in. Provides a guarantee of what we face coming forward.
Any other questions?
Catherine Silver, 048 Rose Court. Neither of these companies are Rhode Island companies, they're not local companies. We have oil companies in town. I think we all use them, we all know who they are, and I don't understand why we're going out of state to buy oil from an out-of-state oil company when we have local or even Rhode Island-owned companies. I know there's Mastelis and all that other stuff, but I can't imagine they would match these prices if you gave them a chance.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item twenty-eight is a motion to approve the contract extension for miscellaneous repair and construction for the water division, waste water division and public works department for a one-year period with George Sherman Sand and Gravel Company Incorporated at their quoted prices and rates under the same terms and conditions as the previous year.
Seven.
Second.
All right, discussion. If there's no questions for the executive director, oh, Stanley.
I just wanted to bring the attention, it says it, under the same terms and conditions as the previous year. So it looks out there, out there in the real world, people are not getting a pay increase. So it looks like we are, we are not as in a fantastic position as everybody might think we are. It is a company that's not going to increase their pay. Maybe we should take note of that as we look at what should be the increases that we award our employees. Pay careful attention that they are appropriate with the taxpayer.
So Stanley, you want to get this guy a raise?
Well, no, I don't, but I'm saying this is indicating what's out there.
We can amend it right here.
I want you to be responsible, you know, and know that not everybody is getting a 20% increase or 10% or something. I want you to be responsible, you know, and know that not everybody is getting a twenty percent increase or ten percent or three percent even, or two percent. Is it still not even given two percent raise? It's giving nothing, zero. So this is what's out there, and what happens, I feel, is government feels that they have so much tax dollars and surpluses that they've been dumping all kinds of money out there. That's what I'm worried about, I want to change that mentality, that's all, thank you.
Alright, is there anyone else? Anyone from the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved five to zero. Item twenty-nine is a motion to unseal the minutes related to real estate items from the following town council executive session meetings on March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, April first, two thousand nineteen, April eighth, two thousand nineteen, and May sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Similar.
There is second?
Second, you give them a chance to call.
Alright, this item comes from Jesse.
Alright, so this item really originates from our November eighteenth town council meeting. And we'll start by saying that I have absolutely no issue renewing the pure liquor alcoholic beverage license as it was originally worded with the restrictions that have always been in place. So that would be a no question yes for me on any vote such as renew their license, like has always been the case. My contention here is really the process by which this happened. So just a quick little recap on that. November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, we had a council meeting where we were renewing all liquor licenses in town. Councilor Mannix made an on-the-floor amendment to the liquor license renewal for pure liquor. What that means is there was no attached written amendment, no notification that this would be happening. Nobody that I'm aware of, the town staff, knew that this would be happening. So that's what happened on the eighteenth. What the amendment did was remove one of two restrictions that were on that license. The two restrictions were from the original creation of this license were to limit relocating the license to another location and to restrict the ability to sell or transfer that license to a new owner. My understanding, since I was, you know, on the council when this license was originally created, was that that was done to ensure that that liquor store stayed in the pure marketplace with Belmont Market. It was created, you know, around the same time as the market was there. And also to really block any chance of getting that license and then just flipping it. So the license was created to add that liquor store there, to support that area with Belmont being there. So what happened was this amendment was done on the spot. My opinion is that this was done in a deceptive manner, to have this change fly under the radar. Without having something attached to the agenda, any written notification of this, it's hard to understand why this would have happened. At the December sixteenth meeting, which was the next meeting we had after the one of the eighteenth, because we skipped the first December meeting, I did ask my fellow council members how this happened. What I said was that this was all news to me, adding on through town staff, I never heard anything from the solicitor about it. And it was just really out of nowhere removing this restriction. I said it was never discussed in executive session. Councilor Mannix replied by saying that what I had just said was a total lie, repeated a total lie. Matt says the amendment came from our discussions in executive session. My question is which session? I have no recollection of this, Councilor Murray has no recollection of this. So what I've done is I've asked the town clerk to look through executive session minutes and provide, in her opinion, or, you know, in her experience, which possible executive sessions this could have been discussed. The four meetings that she provided to me, well, the minutes from those meetings, are the ones I reference in this motion. Those are the only meetings where we discussed pure liquor and any slight discussion of any restrictions, whether those restrictions they wished to have removed, any discussion of restrictions. So those are the, that's what these minutes correspond to, those four meetings. My opinion is that we never discussed this. A lot of people I've spoken to in town wonder where this came from. One way to clear this up is to unseal those minutes, show when we talked about this. Have complete transparency, so everyone understands why this restriction was removed, who requested it, when we directed anyone in the council to put it on the agenda, in this case, it wasn't put on the agenda. Where, where did this come from? I have no information, written or oral, that shows pure liquor requesting this specific removal be removed, or this specific restriction be removed from the license. The only restriction that was ever discussed in any way outside of executive session was the ability to relocate to a different location, not to remove the restriction that limits transfer of ownership. So what happens is this license can now be sold with the business. So the big question is, where did it come from and why was this done on the floor, as a motion on the floor, as amendment on the floor? If anyone follows local state political news, you may have seen the town council in Moon Socket is currently being sued by the attorney general of the state for using overly vague language to discuss any topic they chose. So this was an Open Meetings Act violation. You cannot discuss topics or items in executive session that you haven't put as items on the executive session agenda. So if you're going to put real estate, you talk about real estate, if you're going to put collective bargaining, then you talk about collective bargaining. Removing a restriction on a liquor license that allows the licensee to sell the business is not real estate, that's a liquor license. The item should have been about a liquor license. So we have two scenarios here. One is this amendment was never discussed by the full council, that's my contention. Second scenario is this amendment was discussed in executive session improperly, since it was never put on the agenda, which would be a potential meeting, Open Meetings Act violation. And as we know, Narragansett Town Council was just cited for violating the Open Meetings Act about a month ago, probably not something that we want to, you know, get ourselves into again. So my motion is to unseal the minutes, let everyone in town see when this was discussed. If it was discussed clearly, then it makes sense, you know, to go ahead and put that to vote. If it wasn't, then there's something, you know, a little odd going on here. So I think that pretty much covers it.
I actually have a couple of questions for both Terry and Mark. Terry, could you explain to the town executive session minutes? What, what is the goal, what are the parameters when you actually write them out for us? Do you mean about the content of it? The content's correct. The law requires that the meeting date, place, and time be included as well as the general discussion. And specifically with executive session minutes, what section of the Open Meetings Act is being cited as the exempted reason for the meeting? Okay, so it's not a he said, she said in statements, so we could have discussed things in executive session that don't actually end up in your meeting notes? Right, similar to the regular meeting minutes as well, it's not verbatim record, it's a synopsis of the discussion. Mark, a couple of questions for you, during the time when we have executive sessions, because you were the person key negotiating with pure liquors, with the town building, you would come in, you would brief us with communications that you had with the legal counsel for pure liquors, correct?
Correct, as you know, pure liquors has had two legal counsels, the Cowan hands initially, and there's communications from that law firm, and subsequently, they have a new law firm. So any communications I received from the law firms were communicated to the town council.
And many of these communications were letter of intents from these law firms to the town, which would include the parameters of the sale, including additional provisions?
Yeah, I think, I think initially, they had tendered a letter of intent, and then we had made a counter offer, and it went back and forth, and all of that was in writing.
Alright, did they ever, in any of these letters of intent, include the provision, an additional provision, so something that would not be included in a traditional purchase and sale, that they were requesting that we lift that restriction so they could actually transfer the liquor license?
Well, the minutes are sealed, I don't know what I should be discussing, but that was absolutely in the initial letter of intent, I believe every subsequent, it was a part of every subsequent counter offer.
Okay, so we, we did talk about it in executive session, maybe just to make Terry's notes. Terry, one last question for you, there are four liquor stores in town, do the other three have the ability to transfer their license to another purchaser, should they choose? Yes, they do, with a sub of pure. So, so we would just be giving pure liquor the same right and ability to transfer their business license to another, another person? Can't speak specific to that one, but to the other three liquor licenses, there are no restrictions on them in terms of ownership or location, other than as established in state law with regard to population size. Okay, thank you.
Let's also remind the public that we're in a lawsuit involving that whole complex. People from the town have put a lawsuit out. So for me, until we get the decision, I don't think anything should be discussed, anything should be opened. The judge has it in his hands, he'll make a decision, then from there, we move forward, whatever direction it is. Well, I agree with you Ricky, I mean, we shouldn't be amending previously agreed conditions on licenses during this legal, our legal status. A question from Mark, does that amendment, that either was or was not discussed during executive session, that was approved? It slipped past me, I looked at it real quick, it didn't seem like to be a big deal, it's kind of in line with the other liquor stores. But because we're in the urban renewal zone, it is specifically that amendment relieve us of that zone requirements of, you know, because we have more control over the UR of this zone, correct? So did that relieve us of the UR zone parameters?
Well, I think you have the right to impose that limitation on any liquor license, whether it's in or outside the zone, so the zone does afford the town council a little more flexibility, because it sits in part as the zoning board on a particular area. So, but you have the authority outside of that district as well, so I don't see any unique question with regard to authorization there, as it pertains to the liquor license.
Yeah, I didn't think of it at the time, I don't remember it, because I get a session, to tell you the truth, but. It is a U D property, not owned by the town. We sell to the upper level, then weeks later, we give them the ability to sell the business and move on, so I think the only one that's going to make out here is the liquor store.
And the timing is really the core thing here, why now, after this license has been in existence for a decade or more? Why would we change the liquor license now?
I think it's pretty easy, the pure liquor is, is a small business that wants to be able to sell their license, they're asking for it now. Why now is because we are asked now, pretty easy. And I also think the timing is interesting from the last meeting, where the president of the I Love My Library came up and requested essentially for you to, to open up the meeting notes, or gave the suggestion that the more transparency is needed. We are still, as Rick mentioned, Patrick and Kirk were in, we're waiting for here in the judgment for next Friday, but, you know, it's interesting if the president would want to come up and try and make this become more transparent, why would the town want to entertain anything while we're still in a lawsuit?
Yeah, exactly, why would we change a liquor license when we're in a lawsuit?
I think maybe...
Because it's what we agreed to do in the executive...
Except there's nothing in writing, there's nothing in writing that ever asks for that, nothing is ever...
Jesse, you're wrong, what if we could...
You can unseal, you can unseal the minutes and see if there's anything there, and with those, you can unseal documents that go with it. The deal is done, right, the PNS is signed, so is it in the executive session basically put in place, because you don't want to have this stuff public while you're negotiating? That deal is signed. If you're nervous that there's something in executive session that you don't want to put out because there's a lawsuit, then what are we hiding? What's being discussed in executive session that would affect the lawsuit? Is it the lawsuit about something being done improperly?
I'm not nervous about anything Jesse, I think that there are times that executive session notes should be made public, I just don't see it's here, and if you will take a look at your, at your laptop or whatever, take a look at memos that have been sent to you by the town solicitor, take a look at that, I think you're going to see that we did discuss this.
I did do that, and I have...
Haven't done it thoroughly then, because there, there are some information in there. I don't know, we're looking through in the audience for it to, but it's, it's been discussed.
I have, like I said, the only restriction I've ever seen requested to be removed, and this was not in executive session, was the ability to relocate. That's why I brought this up, because, like I said, this request, this amendment, for me, was out of nowhere, and that's why I brought it up. And I will say, and again, this is no reflection on the clerk in any way, but when we're talking about minutes, and you're talking about it being a synopsis, we did have an item on the agenda months ago that would allow the town council to have the ability to record all minutes from executive session. If we had that, there would be no confusion or, you know, nuance that's missing, it would be right there, they know exactly what was discussed. So what we have now is a meeting done in private that is not captured fully, a hundred percent accurately by minutes, can't be done by a human, that will never, ever, ever come out. The things that are discussed there will disappear with only the people that were in there. Those notes, those contents will die with the members that were in that meeting. So we could have changed that by recording minutes, but we voted three-two not to do that.
Well, you two don't pay attention during these executive sessions.
Ah, there we go, there we go, there we go. That's the, that's the...
Matt, I don't agree with you, I don't agree with you.
So I say one thing, and then we get the jeering and the booing, we see this booing and jeering, it's fascinating to watch, it's so predictable. Do I get to talk?
Sure, sure.
Because, because we discussed this in executive session, because you two are one-note candidates, one-note performers, you don't listen to the whole conversation that takes place. This was discussed at length, this was something that was, that was put forward as, as one of their requests. We couldn't put it in the purchase and sales agreement, it's an inappropriate term for purchase and sales agreement. The only time that we could put it forward as a change was when we were amending the liquor licenses, so. But I've, I've been in the executive sessions with you, I've seen that you don't, you're not engaged and let, because the mob isn't there to support you, and we see now the way that you behave, and this is the leadership, right here, this is the leadership. They are on a, this is, they want us out of office, right, they've started their election year campaign, it's very clear to everyone at home, this is what you're going to get, you're going to get this gutcheon politics, accusations, accusations that are not true, because I remember vividly the discussions about this, and there were other terms as well. It's also inappropriate for us until the closing, not the purchase and sales agreement, until the closing, for us to really be discussing any of this. And that's irresponsible as a council member to put that on, you can vote to not go into the executive session all you want. There are times that I voted over the seven years to not go into executive sessions on, on some issues way back in the beginning with deep water, for example. But that doesn't mean you get to then come and say you want to unseal the minutes in a game of full gutcheon and making accusations that aren't true. So I think you need to stop that. So I think you need to stop that. And you need to stop misleading the people that you are supposedly working with. So that's all I have to say.
So we're talking about what's appropriate to discuss. It's a little ironic for you to be, you know, throwing that accusation when you called the Narragansett Times to discuss an executive session topic before it was even on the agenda. So it's obviously a little.
I'm not sure the editorial of the Narragansett Times actually explained in that. The editorial board explained how that works, that when an item is been public, we, the agenda was ready to go out. And that is a very common thing so the public's informed. In fact, over my seven years, I have always tried my best to communicate clearly with the public. One of the things that all of you are frustrated over is that clarity. I said in the campaign that I thought the deal was bad and it should be repealed. And I still believe that. And the numbers and the camp fees and the folly of having a liquor store there. I have spoken about this. And instead, what has happened since that campaign where I honestly put forward a campaign, and I could have lost, right? I knew that there were a lot of people who didn't agree with me in the town. But instead, what's happened is you pretended as if I didn't say that. You pretended as if there was like some subterfuge, deception. I said it very clearly, everyone. I said it in the debates. I remember people sighing when I said it. But the bottom line is, I have put forward very directly on major issues in this town over the years that I've been on this council, my position. And I've been, on those issues, I have been clear in my communications. Things that we talk about when we go into an executive session on certain items, there's reasons for going to executive session. Negotiations, negotiations to purchase or sell property, union negotiations, things of the like. But you just didn't pay attention during the sessions because we discussed it.
So I'll get back to now. I know you want to talk about the campaign, the last campaign for some reason. But we're talking about this item here now. So can anyone explain why this amendment was not placed in writing on the agenda? If this was discussed and everyone knew this was happening, why was it done on the floor with no warning? And with no, with nothing in writing? Is there a reason?
I really can't answer that question. I mean, we could have, we could have included it, but it was, but. But we still could, everyone's still open to discuss it. We can amend an item the night of the meeting, right?
But why? I mean, you said that we discussed this at length in multiple executive sessions. Everyone knew what was going on. Why would you not put it in the agenda?
I guess I wish that I had. I mean, but I mean, it could have not been on it.
It wasn't Matt's agenda item, right? It was Terry's agenda item going through all different liquor licenses. So maybe that's a question to ask Terry.
No, it's really, it's not, and it's not in his fault. It's, when we go back and look through then what the promise, the discussions were with peer liquors, right? It's not appropriate for the purchase and sales agreement. Had to be done at that point. Otherwise, we had to, would have had to have delayed the whole process.
Well, I think it was because it wasn't discussed. So that's, that's what I think.
Well, that's what you think, but dude, that's, this is an alternate reality. I want everyone at home to know, this is an alternate reality. It's not what happened. Your opinion is that we didn't discuss it. That's fine. That's, that's an opinion. It's a fact. It was discussed.
I actually agree with you, okay? I don't know what I had for lunch. Never mind some executive session that happened once ago, okay? It may or may not have been discussed. I don't remember.
So you heard tonight.
And I also agree with you. I don't think, what's the sense of having executive sessions if you're going to unseal the minutes? Okay? But under this council's administration of this town, over the last year or 14 months or whatever, it demands a release of these minutes to avoid another lawsuit.
It's your allies who are suing the town. It's the people you ran with in the campaign, the Belmont Four, the other two are the people suing the town. Everyone at home needs to realize that. That's who's suing the town. That's who's dividing the town. That's what's going on. Is there any other comments on that?
Just to go back to the statement that Mark said, and I understand that he does not want to get into too much of it because we, but he did state that in the letter of intent, that there was an additional provision for being able to transfer the license as well as other provisions. So, I mean, this is our town solicitor saying that that was in the letter of intent. And anyone knows that when you're purchasing a building or you're selling a building, letter of intents are there and they're discussed. And he briefed us on this. So perhaps you missed it, Jesse.
Perhaps I missed it. Is the letter? The PNS is public, correct? Purchase and sales is public?
Yes.
The letter of intent, of intent, is that public?
No.
Is there a reason why?
We're still negotiating the condo docs.
Okay, because I was never presented with a, I can talk about things that didn't happen, right? This didn't, in my opinion, did not happen in executive session.
What did happen?
A presentation of a letter of intent to council members that included the request for that restriction to be removed.
Oh, you're 100% wrong. You're dead wrong. And not only did it happen once, it happened several times. We had amended letters of intent. So, and it was handed out to everyone. It wasn't me just discussing it. So that's just a flat out wrong. That's flat out wrong.
All right, so that's the case. So that letter of intent with those dates, can I read it?
I don't know what dates. I don't know the dates of the letters of intent off the top of my head. But I can tell you.
Well, we're talking about it. It's being talked about publicly. So this point, just, you know, maybe I'm wrong. And it's so easy to just.
I'm happy to show it to you. I mean, you should have it, but if you don't, I'm happy to send it to you.
Okay.
I guess, I guess the question is, was the purchase of that upper level by the liquor store contingent upon having the ability to sell the business and move to another location? Or sell the business and have that move to another location?
It's not the location. It was a transferability to another person.
All right, transferability to another.
Which we did discuss transferability to other location as well. But again, it's way, this is totally inappropriate. It's offer letters. It's a series of offer letters. And you say you care about peer liquors. You put that, do you know the legal fees they're probably paying on this? I mean, you're supposed to be for small business, but that's, that's.
Well, Matt, they're going to stay. If the library was there, they're going to stay. You know, I mean, if they have the legal problems, because you're a mismanagement of the town.
Oh, you know what? Let's not get into another discussion about the library's doing or not. Let's.
All right, so Mark, Mark.
Let's take a vote. What is motion for? I don't remember. Was it contingent upon, okay, the transfer of the business or the sale of the business or the transfer of a location? Any of those three?
Their, their, their offer to purchase was contingent on a number of things. One being transferring, being able to transfer the license. And I don't think, my understanding was, and I never had direct conversations with them, but my understanding was it wasn't to sell to a third party. They're not young people and they want to be able to transfer it to their kids or trust. But like I said, they're represented by council. I don't talk to them directly. That's what was communicated in writing and that was shared with everybody.
Like I said, I really don't have a problem with any of this. But the idea that it was kind of ran through an amendment, I mean, that, you know, I don't. I think it should have been vetted a little bit more before we voted on it. And I'm sorry, I didn't pay attention.
Again, it wasn't Matt's motion. And, you know, we do often when we have things coming through the clerk's office, is there need to be a change? We met him on the spot and that's what we did in this case.
Yeah, I don't know. But that's a, that's a. I know, but it's a cudgey issue in this.
All in favor?
Public comment, right?
All in favor? All in favor?
No, we're going to go to the public comment.
All in favor?
I've got a comment.
All in favor? It's already an inappropriate conversation. You don't, all in favor?
You want another one?
All in favor?
When was it covered?
All in favor?
Matt, just a little comment.
I was going to say, you should ask, is there anyone to comment on this? Or sitting here, or like ignore it?
The last.
You think you've been ignored the last year? That's laughable. That's laughable. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to have, these people who'd like to discuss.
Aye.
Here we go. All right, let's unseal the minutes.
Is that your vote?
I don't want to unseal anything, to be honest with you. You know, I don't. But you guys continue on to battle about stuff. Jesse, you just bring stuff in to turn it up, you know?
All right, all in, okay, there's the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Rick?
No, I'm staying from all this.
All right, all opposed?
No.
No, motion fails two to two. All right, we're going to move on to the open forum public comment portion of the meeting. You have three minutes to speak.
Hey, Matt, before we do that, I wanted to take the opportunity, Jim Tierney, our new town manager, had emailed out our town employees in the town council, his thoughts for the new year. Jim, I don't know if you have it in front of you, if you'd like to read it or if you'd like me to read it for you?
I don't have it.
I just thought it was a great message for the town. New Year 2020 will be upon us in a few hours. And I just have, want to wish you all a healthy and happy new year. My resolution for 2020 is to continue to treat our town team and our community with civility, professionalism, courtesy, and respect. I resolve to not listen to naysayers who are there to use social media to provoke negative and inflammatory dialogue instead of focusing on positive messages that truly affect our community. I resolve to continue to work and collaborate with all of you and get the jobs done. Join me, it's contagious. I agree.
Hey, does anyone from the public wish to address the council?
Thank you. Ted DiStefano, 94 current John Goddard. New Year's resolutions for the Narragansett majority. This has been an interesting and challenging year for the Narragansett library lovers. It started when the Grinch tree team of three led by council president Matt Mannix convened many secret meetings under the guise of executive session to try to sell the former IgA Belmont building. Fortunately, they were double teamed by law firms representing the library lovers and the Gilpain interests. What better time for us than to make some resolutions for the new year? One, save the date. January 17th, there will be a special hearing at the Kent Colony Courthouse in Warwick, where the anti-library trio, Mannix, Warner, and Ebon, will through our town's attorneys and at our expense, attempt to have the Tiago lifted, thus empowering the trio to again put up for sale the proposed new library site at the former IgA building. Show them what we stand for and make your presence known. Two, don't lose faith and don't be discouraged. We will have a new library and the wishes of the town majority, more than two-thirds of the voters in the last election, will be honored. Three, come to the council meeting so that you can win this firsthand. Who is pro-education, pro-progress, pro-democracy, pro-children, pro-elternally, pro-town values, and pro-residents of Narragansett? Four, tell your friends that the heroes of the past year and the new year will be the civic-minded Narragansett residents led by two outstanding councilmen, Patrick Murray and Jesse Pugh. Five, purchase a love-your-library sign at the library and display it with pride on your front lawn. This will lift our hopes to the sky for the new library. Six, visit our wonderful library and tell our loyal employees that we have their backs and that we, excuse me, we are united. Tell three friends, tell three friends about our new library plans and ask each of them to pass the information on to three other people. Eight, write letters to the editor of the Narragansett Times and show everyone that our citizens are pro-progress and pro-education. Nine, donate to the friends of the Narragansett library. Ten, on voting day in November, remember to come out in force and vote for library supporters, supporters to be on our council like Jesse Pugh, Patrick Murray, Susan Cicillinei-Bernano, and other library supporters to be announced. Finally, to all Narragansett residents, happy holidays and a happy new year.
I think I gave you a copy of.
Just name it.
I'm sorry, Stand With Your House, Narragansett. I think the last time I gave you an article from the newspaper that Treasurer Magazina was involved in, it really kind of says that we really can't afford a library bond. You cannot put a bond on it. We can't afford it. Magazina had this public finance management board make an analysis of our debt. And it says, we can't afford it. So that's one step we can't take. We can't, it would be fiscally irresponsible for you after knowing that they made a study that says we can't afford the bond. You should not put a bond on the next voter's issue. Should be there. Now, I'm not saying we should buy it. You can build a library, but I'm saying we have to look for alternatives. There's only one alternative. A voluntary library assessment tax. Everybody that votes for the library, when they come in, we should have the assessor sitting out in the hallway and let them sign up for $200 a year assessment tax. A voluntary, voluntary assessment tax. Like the sewer assessment. A voluntary assessment tax, $200 a year. That's the alternative. Because you would be irresponsible after knowing this. You know it's out here, that a professional management board specifically was assigned the job to say, can we afford, can't Narragansett afford that bond? It says no. So where is, where is the specialist? Where is the contradiction to this? Where's the professional contradiction to this thing put out by General Treasurer Seth Magazina? And it says here, you know, it's a guide for policymakers in Rhode Island when making decisions in the future. The decision is, we shall not put a bond, a library bond should not be out there. It's anti-taxpayer, anti-resident to put a bond out there. What you do is a voluntary tax assessment. Anybody that wants, anybody that wants it, volunteer to chip in $200 for the next 10, 20 years. Very simple. Ends the story. It's the only choice we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Eric.
Good evening. My name is Jim Dowell. I'm at 30 Silvan Road in Narragansett. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm not part of the discussions that just raised so much sort of energy here. But I'm terrified. My wife and I are terrified. My neighbor and his wife are terrified. Our neighbors in the neighborhood are furious because a corporation has bought two lots across the street from my new home. The corporation is building two bedroom, eight, two eight-bedroom houses on 150 feet of frontage. And that same company built the same structure on Burnside. And they openly advertise on VRBO that the house can accommodate 30 guests. And I know the word family has been kicked around. One of their reviews from one of their tenants thanked them for the good time they had with 22 college friends, not family, not related, who paid by the night to rent the house. So I'm before you because I need your help. And I know you folks probably weren't sitting in those chairs when some of these laws were promulgated, but you're sitting in those chairs now. I sat with, on Friday, you got a beat out. I sat with a whole conference table full of officials from the North Wing here. Very nice of the gentlemen. Gentlemen were, gentlemen were helpful. But I'd like to share kind of my story. But before I moved here two years ago, a friend of mine said, hey, you got to worry about Scarborough. They've got a problem with those kids and the parties and everything. So I sat down with the laws, went through all the ordinances. And I sat back and said, oh, I don't have to worry. Narragansett printed the laws for the public to get to. And one law says, if you're only renting for less than, four or less people, you're a bed and breakfast. And I look up on the laws you print and you give to people to see. And it says, one, the owner would have to reside there. And I know that that's a controversy that soon may be adjudicated in Providence or whatever bearing on us here. But these are the laws on the books. This is where a person has to go to decide if they want to move into Narragansett. And to say that they're old laws or the wording is archaic. I spent my family's fortune in a local broker I sat with said, if that commercial activity is going on across the street, you're going to suffer a material loss of about $100,000. That's me and the neighbor across the street. I'm on a dead end with no cul-de-sac, no turnaround block. 16 bedrooms, one of them is a substandard lot. So 16 bedrooms on 150 feet. And part of the story is, further down the street, a four-bedroom house. Every night, there's eight cars. It's rented for the college kids. Their friends move out of the dorms about the third week. And now there's, you know, double the amount of cars. And when I was told at the meeting on Friday, yes, yes, we, those laws were put in to protect citizens. And literally, I was told, but we're not going to enforce them for reasons of other sort of wordings in there that were archaic. And my answer was, what? I bought my house because. I bought my house because of these laws and now you're telling me you're not going to enforce them? You cashed my tax check. When you cashed my tax check, you made a contract with me. I would imagine I've served on town commissions. I would imagine you folks took an oath. These are the laws you took an oath to enforce. Now I'm standing in front of you telling you I'm going to suffer an unreparable financial hit if you don't enforce these laws and keep that commercial, one of whom the finance guy is a Connecticut resident, from building two motels across the street from me, literally. The, the eight bedrooms in each will be 16 bedrooms. If each person has a guest on a big weekend, you're talking 32 cars on a street with 20 foot wide pavement, pavement. And when I read the ordinance about parking cars, you put two cars on that street, no emergency vehicles are getting down that road. My wife's family has a history of strokes. No vehicle's going to get down there, no emergency vehicle if the parking that would be required for 22 guests in each of those houses is permitted.
Thank you, sir. I know, yeah, but I, we, we, I know that you met with the town manager and we're gonna, we need to look at where this is and the planning.
I know I'm over and I do want to sit down because I know it's impolite to stay warm, but there were a couple of things that came out of that meeting Friday, like sending a letter to the prospective builders, you know? Yeah, yeah, you can put an eight-bedroom house in a residential zone, but Narragansett has a law that says if you're under four people, you have to live there and if you're renting more than five people, it's a boarding house and you need a special use permit. I would ask you, I'd ask you to take a vote right now. Could you ask right now the engineering or the public safety department to do a traffic study on what would happen on that street, the dead end, if that many bedrooms were being occupied fully and had guests? That's something I think you could do right now. You can change the ordinance. And my problem is it's going to happen next week. We spoke with the developer. He was ready to break ground next week. Now I know he's got more permitting to do and I've been told by several officials, well, it's going to take a long time, there will be hurdles, but no one's putting a roadblock in front of it and I know that the new Providence ordinance might be adjudicated in a couple of weeks. That's not going to help me. If that permit is signed for them to start building, all the old rules are all that matters. And I'm relying on this and I have to tell you, not one but several town officials said, well, you're going to have to sue us. I'm going to have to sue my town for not enforcing the laws that they print and give out to the public? That's not right, ladies and gentlemen, and I need help from an undivided council to push this through and even to nod the powers that be in the North Wing to get those things written, get them to you so you can put them out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, did you want to respond to that? I know that you gave the council a very long briefing afterward and I just wanted to have your, you have the ability to respond.
I'd be glad to share that with everybody in this room. Leave a copy for them, they can all have it. But I don't recall that meeting, I don't recall anyone saying to sue the town. I don't recall that. We did explain the
It might have been after, sir, a side comment, you know, when I said, what am I going to do?
Excuse me, sir, sir.
Use one at a time.
But Mr. Marcela did detail the process of filing a complaint and the travel that it takes after, if a building permit is issued and how one would oppose it and file a complaint and how it would be heard in the town and what the next, if the building permit was upheld by, by the town, the appeal process was laid out under the existing code ordinances now. And then we discussed a lot of potential ordinance changes and we all agreed that, that to change this, to put a stop to this type of activity, there would most likely be some zoning changes that would have to be enacted. And Mr. De Louvre is currently looking up some other jurisdictions who may or may not have similar ordinances that we could consider. And then we'll meet with Mr. Marcela and Mark Davis to see the applicability to what we're dealing with.
So this meeting really was a benchmark meeting to be able to have you work through your team here in Town Hall to be able to come back with some solutions and some potential suggestions for, for, for changes to zoning.
We had the, the neighbors, the neighbors involved, the department heads, and solicitors.
So you're on it?
We are. There's no promise it's going to move quickly though because it does involve the potential zoning changes which have to be hashed out.
I hope that helps, Bill.
Yes, yes, ma'am, my only
Catherine.
My only remaining question would be can it happen in time? If, if the building permit is signed, he's, as Tony said, Santilli, once the permit is signed, it, he then is under the laws in effect at that time. I'm making a point, the laws are already there. I know there's issues about the wording of the laws, but I, I need the help now and I'm asking for, for your help to expedite things at the very, very least and do what you can. It's, it's a residential neighborhood and this is absolutely a commercial activity. No one that's involved in that project is ever going to live in that house and when they're going to sell it, I've got a white elephant across the street, I will be able to sell mine.
I understand and I know you've gone over time, but I think Jim's giving his commitment that he's, he's looking into this matter, so we'll be in touch.
Catherine.
Catherine Sullivan, 48, Rose Creek. I was also at that meeting, I'm not going to, Jim has a separate issue from the issue that the people in the neighborhoods have. There's absolutely no control over the number of people that are being allowed to rent these homes. Mr. Santilli stated he was not going to exercise any control. He stated that he could even consider 22 people a family. Mr. Ferendi said he was going to file a complaint against 33 Burnside, which had 22 people not too long ago, and he said he would not take the complaint because again, he would consider it a family. We have an eight-person fire department. Two people of those are usually on rescue. I want to know, can our, can our eight-person fire department possibly save 22 people? Don't think so. All of these additional people coming into these rentals are a strain on town services and there has to be some control. What has happened is this town did not pursue the four unrelated, they did not appeal it in the court, they should have appealed it. We withdrew our appeal because we said we're wrong court and we didn't pursue it. And now we're stuck with the justice decision, which by the way, wasn't within his purview to make because constitutional issues have to go before state and federal courts, but because we didn't appeal his decision, it stands. And Mr. Santilli is saying that our ordinance for unrelated is no good and he's reverting to the three unrelated, of course, the three which art has already been adjudicated as unconstitutional. Therefore, nothing. In other words, no controls are in place, okay? So we brought up the grooming house issue with five to 20, you can make people get a special use permit. Mr. Marcela stated that, oh, it says in this ordinance that you have to have a, a daily register. And gee, I don't know how we're going to keep a daily register. How about this, just put a pad on the counter and make people sign in. There was absolutely, I did not see any intent by anybody there to do anything to help the residents who are, who have to deal with these people and, and this, these, you know, rentals. This is abuse really. Burnside happens to have a seven-bedroom house and they realize that they can make more money renting it night to night, $940 a night, okay? This is what they're doing, night to night, weekends, a week. And this is unacceptable, really unacceptable. Like I said, it's a strain on services and our police and fire department can't handle the issues that are definitely going to involve. And again, there was just obfuscation at this meeting, you know? Can't do anything, they've not written right, you know? And a lot of that kind of thing was kind of disappointing frankly. And frankly, and anybody who looks at this or look in this right now listening to this, I took a ride around last week, there were so many orange stickers, it was unbelievable. And the houses that don't have orange stickers have dumpsters in front of them because you know what the new owners are doing? They're locking up the garages and they're adding bedrooms and they're going online, these realtors, and they're saying rent to six students, rent to eight students. I've emailed a couple of these realtors and they'll say, oh, they say, oh, well, four unrelated is unconstitutional, we can pretty much do whatever we want. And this is, this can't continue.
Thank you, I know, thank you. Anyone else? Mary.
Mary Nato, 10 Second Street, Narragansett, Rhode Island. I just wanted to note that tonight we had two items that we thought, I thought we should have public opinion on. One was the reappointment of someone from the planning board because there was no open discussion meeting, so I think we should try to make sure we have open discussion on all our items. And number 29, which was dealing with the real estate, where we had no open discussion on that because it does seem that there's something, if you buy our building, then we'll give you a change to your local license. And so should have been able to have public comment on both those items and open, I definitely agree with Jesse and thank you for trying to seal the records. And it does seem like quid pro quo that we're having an issue that if you do this, maybe I'll give you special license. Thank you.
And then Carbine, did you ever hear of the man in the back and then Richard?
Carbine Town, 240 Wood Hill Road. Those of us who speak at open forum have been admonished over and over again that open forum is not a question and answer period. So I did not expect a response to my, responses to my questions at the December 6th key of Town Council meeting. I do however believe that the Town Council answers to people, the people, so I wonder why they don't respond to people's questions. When I didn't get any answers, I sent emails to all of you and to Mr. Tierney. Now Jesse and Patrick respond to my emails, Matt has responded once, Jill and Murky have never responded to my emails. So I wonder how people get answers to their questions. Did the, please, someone, Jesse, Patrick, Mr. Tierney, somebody answer these questions. Did the town appeal the OLS decision not to grant a waiver to the town for not level funding the library in this year's budget? If the town did, did OLS respond to that request? And if it did, what was its response? How are you going to ensure that the library will be able to remain open and provide the same services it has always provided? Do the math, folks. The 400,000 you budgeted for the library is less than 31% of what its operating budget has been for the last five years. How can you lie to the taxpayers and to the state when you submitted your budget with the $181,959 line item contribution for operating costs from OLS and the state? That you were forewarned was not going to be forthcoming if you did not level fund the library. How do you plan to correct this terrible disservice you have done to those who utilize our wonderful library? Anyone? Please, tell me, answer any one of those questions. Mr. Tierney, you never responded to my email. None of you did.
Jim, can we just give a quick answer on the waiver? It's an easy one.
I did apply for the waiver initially and got a response. I provided those documents to the trustee who used to do very mail. I did not do the appeal because the response to us was quite clear that it would be like hitting the same key on the computer when it keeps ringing. There's no need to hit it again. The, I believe it was page two of the second paragraph of page two spelled out one criteria that was not going to change, which would be critical in denying us that waiver.
So you lied in budget?
Oh, no, no one lied in budget. The budget is a plan and let's go ahead.
For the record, that
The reason sometimes answers aren't, there aren't answers is because the questions are loaded. It's not, did you file an appeal and what's the next step in the process? It's like, why are you, why are you trying to destroy the library that, I mean, it's two very different quick questions, but yes, sir.
Jim, did you want to add to that? You said for the record.
Well, sir, thank you.
I don't think you're lying. I know, I emailed
Name and address, sir.
Jesse, what are you doing here anyway? Do you ever govern anything? Everybody I know, local, native, as soon as you stop talking and change your habits, everybody.
Direct comments.
It's like watching paint dry. You are so boring and you're, you mean nothing. You're talking about 2016. Do you live with Uncle Win? Because you sound just like him.
To correct it, to direct me at the question.
Does he live with Uncle Win? I don't know.
I do not live with Uncle Win, whoever it is. You're talking about Win Hames?
I don't know, that's your uncle, right?
No.
Because you sound like your nephew or
Yeah, I thought I lived in South Kingston.
You live in South Kingston? What are you doing?
Was he at the rumor last time?
Why are you even there? Yes.
Trying to make statements regarding.
So anyway, every time I email Rick, he gets back to me, Matt, I'm sure you would get back to me, but someone told me today that the librarian didn't want the town's life insurance, health insurance. So she cut her choice to go out and get her own policy and it's costing us, the taxpayers, $30,000 a year for her health insurance because she refused the town's. Now I don't know if it's true, I'm not a liar, blah, 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 blah. Someone told me that, that she had that choice and instead of taking the town's, she went out and cost us $30 a year. So we're supposed to level fund the library, we're supposed to hire more librarians, but they only make minimum wage, which is $90,000. So, I mean, where's it going to end? Where's it going to end? And Jesse, what are you, what's your agenda? What are you, what are you after these people? What is it? And if your comp lawyer, your ex on, Susan Bonanno, she would have changed her mind twice. So you, I wouldn't, you know, she, you think she's your library savior? I think, you know, I don't know. And how much interest have you got from the money that Terrence Meyer gave us or he didn't give us? Has he given it to us yet? So why would he thank someone for money that he hasn't given us? And these guys up here, I know Rick Lima, I know a little bit about Matt and I know a little bit about Jill. They do more for the town than anybody. The blessing of the fleet wouldn't happen without him. The plunge on the beach wouldn't happen without him. The Christmas tree thing up there that he sets up every year, he's a lion's club, he does more for the town than anyone. Matt Mannix does more for the ponies, Jill Boy, he does more for the poor people than anybody. What do you guys do? What have you done? Anything, what have you done?
I'm, I'm still trying to figure it out.
I mean, why don't you sell the library, the, the, why don't you? Let them put it in there. Or the school? Forget that, Bill.
Richard. Thank you. Richard.
Richard Van Gresh, 55 Old Seale. I sort of remember a movie, I think it was Beverly Lomond, Robert, The Seven Year Edge is something I remember. And this is the 70th, 2014, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. This is the seventh year of the library, what I call murkyness. It was murky in 2014, that's why the Town Council did not bring forth the bond issue. And it's gotten even more murky. And this is a new year and you would hope, our first goal is to get this clear and to cut out the vituperation. Vituperation has led us nowhere. So I've got a fifth amp murky to go along with meditate, moderate, medicate, and most important, mediate. We can do this. We've got to believe we can make this un-murky. All we've done in these seven years is take a murky situation and make it murkier. Please, let's try the other four, especially mediation. Please, let's try the other four, especially mediation.
And Susan.
Susan Amoruso, West Bed Drive. So many things. I just think that, I mean, I'm for unsealing all these executive sessions. I feel there's been way too many, some things are appropriate. I am for a more precise way to report what happens in executive session. I think it would clear a lot of air. It would protect the town from any issue that would come up. I just think that goodwill starts at the top. And I really think that it's been pointed out before that we don't really, people who are supporting, people who come here and speak politely are not a model. So I think that word should be gotten rid of. I've already said that before. As far as people responding to emails, yes, ma'am, you've responded a couple of times to mine. But Jill, never have heard from you or Rick Lima, never. And I find that awful for an elected official not to respond because how are you going to get answers to your questions? I know I'm kind of scattered, but I would like to support the person who talked about this housing thing. I didn't really pay that much attention to it. There's a very large house in my neighborhood that all of a sudden, I'm seeing all these cars. And I'm thinking, it's a B and B and we are missing an opportunity to tax them, maybe, or something. But when you see eight to ten cars pull up to a house and they're different every weekend. I mean, I'm hoping that this doesn't happen next to me because it does change the quality of your life when you buy a single-family home and you anticipate that, yes, they might rent it, but it'd be a yearly rental. These weekend rentals are a problem. I just, and I'm still trying to figure out why we are not focusing on some of the positives in our town such as, and I've said it before, the library staff did win a contest, a state contest that was a national, you know, publication and was deemed as the nicest place. So whatever our feelings are about the library, we should be able to acknowledge it and use that as a publicity for the town. Because we love our beach, we love surfers. But we really need to love the staff that works at our library under these conditions. And I'm hoping that something positive will come out of this and we get the library we deserve. Because the libraries are the heart of a town. And so many other people are on the cutting edge of this and we are missing an opportunity. And we're wasting so much effort and time fighting a library that people voted for, that they were willing to accept it for. We need to focus on that.
And Lori and Patrick.
Lori Kelly, Wildfield Town Road. So in June of two thousand and eighteen, Pier Liquors contacted the town and asked for permission. They said that they were willing to move and end their lease early. They wanted to move to a new location. I bring that up because again, Jesse, thank you so much for bringing this issue forward. There were restrictions on Pier Liquors' lease. One was removed, so they get a windfall that they can now sell the building and their liquor business together, something they were never allowed to do. And they were never, and it was never modified so that they could move to another part of the town. Because that is not the agenda of the majority of this Town Council. The second thing I wanted to say is there's, November fourth, I believe, was the public commentary period on all liquor licenses. And if you look at the minutes, Matt, you go on about how this is the time when you, the public gets to comment. No one commented, but no one knew you were going to do an amendment on the Pier Liquors' license. So it seems to me, if you have a public commentary and then you amend it after that public commentary, we should have been able to speak on that night, which there was no comment from the public and there was no comment from the council at the time either. It's also ironic to me because Mr. Manager, you've taunted Mr. Pew and said, "Why don't you put it on the agenda to unseal the executive session minutes?" And so he did, and then no surprise, you wrote it down. So it's just, who's wasting whose time? And finally, for all the New Year's resolution and the fine comments, whether it was Mr. Tierney or Jill, your comments, I really think you need to look at yourselves. When you're making a discussion on unsealing the minutes and you refuse to let anyone comment publicly on that, the solicitor or the manager, someone should intervene and say, "The public has the right to speak on this motion, which is, we want to express that we think that this should be transparent." If it's not in the minutes, and some people say it was discussed and some people say it wasn't, that's the point of having executive session minutes. If I can't read them, that's fine. Maybe the Attorney General should be looking at that. Thank you.
Patrick Cavanagh, one oh nine, Winterberry Road. In past meetings, Rick, you had mentioned it with OLS. You said, you checked with them and they said, "If the library gives us the money back and then we would give it back to the library, OLS would consider that fully funded." Pat came back and said, "Sounds like we're laundering money." The manager, the town manager, who wanted to stand on the thing, he said that he was going to check with OLS to see if Ricky, you were right. And I believe he said, "You were right." Was that check ever given from the library to the town? So the town, I'm just following up. So the town can give the money back to the library? So the library would be considered under OLS fully funded? Did that happen? The library did not write a check to the town? Correct?
No.
Okay, all right, well, I'll just put it out there then. If you don't, it's not a question, answer, it's fine. Second of all, when people come up and they say that this town is not pro-education. I went to my senior class for basically the eighth grade and then I went to Narragansett High School where I graduated in eighty-two. My daughter graduated Narragansett High School in two thousand and eleven. Been living in the town forever. I believe the town budget was about sixty million dollars and we spend about forty of it or something like that that goes to the schools. And we don't even have a thousand kids in our schools. So we spend about twelve to fourteen thousand dollars per pupil. So I really get aggravated when people seem to say we're not pro-education. We spend a ton of money on educating our children, which I have no problem. When my daughter went through the school system, I went through a school system. But those two things being said, I have more, I know it's not a question in the answer, but I'll throw the question out there. There's a lot of towns and cities that have been getting hacked and then they're being held hostage by the hackers to get their data back. Is Narragansett working with the State Fusion Center and the state police to make sure that we have all our data backed up? So that way, if the town in Narragansett does get hacked, that we don't have to pay the ransom to get our data back? It's just a question. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Oh, Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year. All right, is there anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
Hold in favor.